Welcome to the Journey 2020. I'm Charles Morris, happy to be here with you, coming off the weekend and hope you did have a good weekend. Indeed, you know, this is Journey 2020, where we come to you every Monday somewhere around 7:00 PM. And we've been doing it since 2013. As I always tell the story that the idea and the concept of the Journey 2020 was by a friend of mine, Dr. John Robinson, the clinical psychologist here in the area who I've been working with for many, many, many years. And he called me up and said, Charles, I got something that I want to share with you and tell me what you think of the idea. And the rest is history. And so we've been, originally, you know, we started the show Coming To You on a Friday. We did that for a couple of years. And I think about maybe four or five years ago, Dr. Robinson came to me and said, Charles, I am so busy right now. Plus, my wife is saying that I'm not spending enough time with her. So once he said that, I understood. But he said, Charles, I'm so busy right now, moving into a new building, and I'm trying to get some things together. But he's actually been on the show a couple of times over the past, maybe four or five years, talking about some different things. And he says that he's gonna come. As a matter of fact, I need to call him now that I'm talking about him. I need to call him because the last time that I talked to him, because I was trying to get him to come on, when that Will Smith thing happened, you know, the Will Smith, you know what I'm talking about. And so I wanted him to come on the show and talk about the impact of Will Smith, the seat that Will sits in, and the impact of what we see because of what we think we see. And what does that mean? Well, not to get into it, but when you look at these people that we idolize, and the impact that they have on us, and sometimes those people don't understand the seat that they sit in, they just being themselves. And whether or not it's an athlete, a musician, or an actor, or ever that's out there, and public is always eyeing them and wanting to be like them. So I said, Will Smith set up then act like an idiot. And then he had continued to act like an idiot. And let's talk about the impact. And we're talking about the young people who's watching this. And that's what the show is gonna be about. But he was having some health issues. And that's why I said I need to call him because he said, Charles, give me a little bit more time. They was running some tests and so on and so forth. And the last time I talked to him about a month ago, he was doing, he was doing well. But that just reminded me, I need to give him a call and do a follow up and see how he's doing. But anyway, this is the Journey 2020, where we come to you again, weekly. And, you know, for questions, comments, you know, I always say, well, you know what, you can always hit me with an email with love. And then, of course, you know, I talk about Chill Mondays. And for those who, what's Chill Mondays? Chill Mondays is that we look for artists, people who paint, draw, write. And we try to figure out like, well, where did that come from? What is the meaning of that? We try to get you to express yourself in the sense of helping us understand, what is it that you're saying? What is it that you want us to hear? And we try to find out a little bit about the artists, and what motivates them, and the gift that God gave them. So that's Chill Mondays. And also, I'm a reminder about the pastors' roundtable that comes to you monthly with some of my friends, who I'm surrounded with, who we talk about things from a biblical standpoint. I love that show. I've learned so much. We going on over two years now of the pastors' roundtable. So that's something that you should look out for as well. So what brings us up to today's show? Well, you know, it's funny, because when you look back on some things, and time goes by, and I remember I used to be at the club, no, this, but anyway, I go back, and you think about, like, you know what, I used to see this person over the span of years, over the span of years, and we would talk here and there. And then you evolve into what we are today. What does that mean evolve? That means that, well, you, when you was in your twenties, you was in your twenties. Then when you was in your thirties, you was in your thirties. Then when you was in your forties. And so you know how that list goes, right? So now you're having conversation totally different than you did back over 25 years ago or so. And then you go, oh, so you're thinking about this, you're thinking about that. And really, so you go, okay, you never saw that coming. Okay, so which is, which is good. And whatever it is that you didn't see coming, and you having the conversation, you go, yeah, okay, so we have evolved into this part of our lives. And so that means that I have to bring on my guest today. And she's gonna talk about how she has evolved into a project that she's working on. And I'm so proud of her. And how are you, Ms. Rosemary, the real deal?
Hello, I am just excellent. How are you, Mr. Charles?
Any day above ground is a great day for me. And welcome to the Journey 2020. Happy to have you here on the show, because we had been talking about it for a while. And the show, well, not necessarily show, but in talking to you, because as I've gotten older, I am so fascinated with the idea and the concept of anything to do with politics. And so I am not a politician. And I realize that I'm not a politician, because in understanding what you have to be to be a politician, I know God then molded and shaped me that way. And what I mean by that is, when you mature and start to understand the way the world works, some of us can fit that mold. And I'm just talking about me. It has nothing to do with nobody else. I'm just talking about me. I don't do well in that because, to me, the world is kind of messed up. We don't deal with truth very well. We deal with the truth in the senses, our truth, and what's in the best interest for us. And sometimes, talking about me, I'm babbling right now, but the truth could be like, right there in front of us, so true, so honest, but it means nothing. So that's why I have an issue, because the conversation is usually about the truth that is in their, in their best interest, but not the truth in the sense of the whole for the people. So let's talk about you for a second. We met many, many, many years ago. How long, how many years has it been since, like, I don't know if I got where I first saw you? How many years has it been?
It's gotta be at least 40 years. Wait a minute, maybe 35, 30 to 35 years. Yeah, it's been a long time. Yep.
And I remember your little troop, and people you used to hang out with back in the day, and all of that. And but I had you on the show today because we were having a conversation. And you said that you wanted to run for office. And I'm like, really? Okay. And I heard what you had to say. And but why don't you give us a little background before we get to that point of how you got to that place where you decided that you wanted to run for office? So why don't you give us a little background on, on Ms. Deal?
First off, I want to say thank you again for having me on the show. I am humbled to be here on your show. So thank you for allowing me to share some of my knowledge and my information that I want to spread with the community. So I really appreciate that, Charles. So thank you. A little bit about myself, how did I get here? You know, you mentioned that you're not a politician. Well, technically, right now, I'm not a politician. I am a resident, I am a concerned citizen, and I am a candidate running for Orange County District Number Six. So how did I get here? Well, I think it was ordained, because I didn't see it coming. It just kind of like, whoop, it's here. It's like, wow. But when I look backwards over my life, I see, you know how we have a career path? And so we study along our life and our career path, and we make various choices. Well, I had to look back, and I noticed that I had two paths. Right alongside of me growing up with my career path, I also had a volunteer path. And so for me, the two paths collided, and they came together, or more merged. They merged and came together to bring me at this point. So when we were younger, my responsibilities was taking care of my kids, you know, paying bills. But I did do a lot of volunteer work in the time I was a kid, nine years old, and Girl Scouts, growing up to learn how to be a leader, how to organize groups, how to be activists, how to be advocate, especially advocate to speak for people and to be able to, you know, when the ones that cannot speak, or their voices cannot share their voice, then I would be that ear to listen to share it. So when we met, when we was younger, you know, we were young, you know, and you can't say I did anything that, you know, I'd be ashamed of. So I always remember to make sure I presented and acted like a lady, because that's how my mom raised me. So I loved to dance back then, got away from that. But from my paths to where I am now, the community to me, I have done a lot of volunteer hours and years into the community selflessly. I wasn't looking for anything in return. I am, I am entering, I have entered this race, not for me. I've entered this race for what I feel the community needs, from listening to their voices. And so that's what brought me here today, listen to the community, my friends that I made, my neighbors I made into friends, or they became my friends. But that's how I got here, is them embracing me and said, you know, Rose, you've been a president of Robbinswood Community Improvement Association for so long. We know that you took a break for a minute to take care of your mom, and you're a caregiver, and we know you have a big heart. And we know that you will put us first. And that's why I'm entering the race, because I'm not doing it for me. I'm retired. I don't have to work. But this right here is like, I got all this free time, I have all this energy, and it's like, what am I gonna do with it? And so when my neighbors came to me, and it's like, you know, Rose, have you ever thought about running for county commissioner? It's like, that maybe a little bit, but that was years ago, but not really. And then they kept on working on me. And this happened like, right before COVID. So during COVID, still working on me hard. And finally, last year, like, they pushed me, like, Rose, make up your mind. And I'm like, you know what, I thought about it, I thought about it hard. And then I prayed on it. And so with listening to the spirit inside of me, I know that I was led to enter the race. And however it goes, I know that's what God wanted to happen. So I pray that I will be the winner, and your next county commissioner for District Six, because I know I can make a difference. There's no question in my mind, I know I can make a difference.
Okay, well, you know, I have a million questions for you. Trying to figure out where I want to start. Because I'm always intrigued, and not necessarily in the sense of the way that it sounds. But I'm always intrigued with the whole concept of politics. And like I said, being, this had, again, this has nothing to do with you. I'm just, I'm speaking in terms general, I'm speaking of myself. So when I, when I say something has nothing to do with you, in the terms of just politicians, and I guess the way the world works, because no matter where you go, is this is, this is how the world works. And, and over the years, there are a few people that I've known personally. Like, for an example, I've been knowing Val Demings since 11th grade, and we have been friends, very, you know, friends since 11th grade. A few other people who have been in office that are my friends that I know personally. And it's just interesting, when you know these people from back, when you way, way, way before they were in office, think like, you know, for yourself, before you even thought about running for office. And when you talk to them personally, okay, and you are able to have this relationship with them. And I'm trying to see myself sitting in that seat, that's why it's hard for me, because God just didn't give me that, you know, that's, you know, but to think about, and I, and it's funny too, because I asked you this question a while back, and I said, and I don't want you to answer this show, I'm just gonna tell you that I asked you this question. I said, are you ready for this? Are you, are you sure you ready to step into this role of what, what this really means, and stuff like that? Because it's, it's, it's politics. And so, and because you, you're always gonna have something coming at you, you're always gonna have this, and no matter what, there's always this, that, this, and you can do right, and you can be right, and somehow there's always enough this, this. But that's the reality of politics. And so it's like, you can take the innocent, and then you kind of like baptize them into this world of this right here. And then a lot of politicians, when they start out one way, they end up another way. And I'm just speaking in general, it has nothing to do with you. Because even on the lower level, on the lower level, it's still the same. And I remember, this, again, it has nothing to do with you. I did a panel discussion. It was for the city, when they was running against, you know, Regina Hill. And I had like, maybe four, I think I had like, five people. And they were all running, you know, for the city. And Regina Hill was the only one that didn't show, show up at this time. And it was Cynthia, it was, it was, I think it was like, four or five of the candidates. And we, you know, this was when I was doing the show, I wasn't doing it because, you know, remotely, you know, so we physically show up, and I had them come to my church. So we was at my church. And so, but it was good, though. I loved it. And I got so many compliments on it, not for the sake of me, but the fact that we had a very good discussion. I asked them, what was their plan? Why did they think that they, you know, people should vote for them? But one of the key things that I really enjoyed out of that whole thing, I went to each one of them, and I said, I want you to turn, and now each one of them had to do this. I want you to turn to each one of the candidates that's on this panel, and tell me what is it that you admire about them. So they each went down and said, I admire this about this, and this about that. So it ended up being a good session. And I still was asking that same question. Are you guys ready for this journey, looking at the bigger picture? Locally, yeah, but the bigger picture of what politics about? How did that play into your mindset? And you getting ready to do stepping into that room or that arena? How did that play a part in you?
Well, it's interesting, because I have worked for really a couple of large firms. And I remember when I was at Lockheed Martin, one of my managers said to me, he goes, Rose, every time you answer, your answer is politically correct. But to me, I felt that was the professional way to answer. So I believe during my journey, it was for me, with me working in HR, I seen a lot of different things, heard a lot of things. And, and when I worked in accounting department, you know, you know how to budget and take care of things, take care of your spreadsheets, you know. And what I learned, you had to be confidential, you had to learn how to, you know, things you hear, you just keep it to yourself. You know, some things, you just, you just can't share it. But I learned that it was good for me to be politically correct with my answers, because that way I never offended anyone. So I've learned through the years how to walk, some people will call it tight rope. But I learned how to walk it so well that I probably can do it, you know, I'm, I'm very balanced on it now. So working in the community, you get to meet a lot of different people as well, a lot of different personalities. And you have to adjust, you have to, you have to, you know, be flexible, because you never know what that person may be going through. So you have to be that, that sounding wall, that block, and to the point where you're there. So that way, they could give it to you, you absorb it. So the block is that you take it in. I learned a lot. I definitely learned a lot for the years. And I believe through that, and even up until the last year, I have learned so much. And, you know, I, I remember one time I had a very dear friend of mine, he says, you're not like a sponge, Rose. I'm like, okay, what am I like? He says, you're like a blotter. And I'm like, a blotter? He says, yeah, that holds even more in than a sponge does. He says, you hold a lot of things in, you absorb a lot. And he says, I see you thinking all the time. And when I listen to you, I'm like, does she read that whole book like, in 10 minutes? You know, something like that. So I'm a quick learner, quick study. And this last year has been a fantastic ride, a wonderful journey. And I wouldn't trade it for anything, nothing at all. So I am definitely more than ready for this position with all my work experience and my years in business. And then also, you know, in the last 18, over 18 years, I have been licensed, I have been a licensed real estate professional agent, have been a Realtor a lot of those years. Recently, I am not, because I need to focus on my campaign. But working in real estate, you get a lot of no's. You don't always get a yes. So you have to do a lot of knocking, a lot of knocking before you can say yes. So I am actually used to rejection. I learned how to deal with it, how to cope with it, but also learn how to keep on knocking until I get that yes. So I learned not to give up. I'm not a quitter, I just keep on going. So over the years, my skin has gotten thicker. So I think it's a good thing.
You know, in this, in this arena that you're talking about, I, like, for an example, I've been knowing Bruce Endon for when he was like, 24 years old. And I've had him on the show. And I asked him to speak into his world of politics and what it's like. And he was trying to explain it. That, you know, and he was saying things that you know, and he was saying how you have an agenda. And then these other people, agenda is different than your agenda. But everybody has their agenda. So now you got to try to get them to work with you. And they want you to work with them, because you really need each other. But somehow, you have to try to make it work. And that's the world of politics, and da, 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 so on and so forth. But for yourself, why don't you quickly talk about your district? Give us some information on your district. Let, you know, and for people who don't know about the district, and why you felt it was so important, for the district needs you, and are, and vice versa. Why don't you just tell us some information about the district?
District Six in Orange County is very large, is very dense, and is majority minority community. This is the largest district that has the most diverse cultures in District Six. You name it, nationality, they probably live right here. We have like, 49% of our populations from the islands. We have another large percentage that are African American, we have Caucasian, we have the Hispanic community, we have the Asian community. Is extremely diverse. I looked at the district as a whole, and I see so many things over the years that have not been addressed. It tugs at my heart. I live in the same home for 25 years, Frayham, Robbinswood, and Pine Hills. I have been a resident of Pine Hills over 40 something years. So when I look at District Six, I see the big part of Pine Hills. However, because I've lived here so long, I know the whole area. I know where Carver Shores is. That car, I've been there, hang out there, friends there, Carver Shores, Washington Shores, Lake Man, Tangal, I got family who lives there, downtown area, Paramore. I attended two different churches over Paramore. I was a member of Hurst Chapel, AME, for quite so many years. And then I also was a chapel member of Bath of Bethis Church, both on Paramore. So I know the community very well. And I see it is hurting. And it's, it's just not in one area. It's like, the whole district is needing help, it's hurting. And the, talking to us, if only we would listen, and not have our own agenda in there. So the only agenda I have is to represent the community. I want to lift them up. As far as building generational wealth, that is extremely important to me. Financial literacy is also important. I am definitely pro education. We need more educational programs for all ages. We need more resources for all ages. Our seniors, they need more. They, they need to have more resources, they need to be able to have somewhere that they could call their home and be able to grow. And as I look at District Six, it goes from, let's see, to give everyone an idea how big it really is. If you go west, it goes from Silver Star to Apaka Island. It actually goes over a little bit of Silver Star, past Hiawassee, where J Mark is, where Silver Ridge is, that little piece down there over to Apaka Island is part of District Six. When you come up Apaka Island, and you turn on Good Homes Road, going west, that's part of District Six, is you cross over Colonial and go down, District Six also has Gother. It also has, as you go back, all the way down into Metro West. And District Six is so large, it actually goes to 528, the B line. It is like, very vast. It goes downtown area. It goes like, pretty much boundary like, oh, Orange Blossom Trail from like, Sand Lake Road, 528, comes back down to OBT, and comes back. It goes back to Colonial. So this is on the east side now. And it goes all the way to Colonial, and then it starts coming back. It dips a little bit more going north on Colonial. So like I said, we have all nationalities. My background is very diverse, in many ways, professionally, as well as personal. Personally, I grew up in a home, a biracial home. I grew up where my parents was very loving. They owned a gas station, they were doing well financially. But they also went ahead, and they included new members in our family. And we used to have, I used to have foster brothers and sisters, from the time I was 11 years old. And I actually, two brothers that were adopted, Mike and David. And so we all moved here to Florida. So I grew up, you know, learning how to love and just accept everyone. My brothers are Puerto Rican. We didn't care. We had like, other foster sisters and brothers who were different nationalities, it did not matter. It just didn't matter. So as far as my professional life, I could say that very diverse too, because I done work in accounting, most of my life. Well, I can't say that anymore, because when I start looking back on my years, I'm like, wow, okay, I have to remind myself my age, because I forget, I don't feel my age, I don't think I look my age. And I forget sometimes, like, wow, I do have all these years, without exaggerating the truth, I could actually say that, you know, I worked 40 something years, since like, 20 years old. And I had to say that 40 something years, and I'm like, two, three years old, because that doesn't count, you know, so. But my background, since accounting, job placement specialist, career services, office management, career service director, executive administrator, and then, did I say educator? Yes, done that too. Been a mentor. And then got into real estate. So done a lot of community work. So that's like, you know, it just came back around, the community work and what I've done professionally. But I am thankful that not only my personal life is diverse, but my professional life. Because I've learned how to be able to be in a room with anybody, and to feel comfortable. And also, learn how for them to feel comfortable around me, so they could open up and talk to me. Because I have lived in almost every different type of community. I have lived in a Caucasian community at one point in my life. I have lived in an all African American community, a lot of part of my life. And now I am in a mixed community. And so I'm just thankful. I am thankful for just the insight, things I have seen. I am thankful for just the insight, things I have seen throughout my years and to be able to take what I have seen, what I have learned. And just to be that person that someone could talk to and be able to help them. Not just talk to, but to hear them and actually help them to make a difference. So my goal is to definitely make a difference in everyone's life as far as I can in District six. So every part of District six is important to me and I don't know how to emphasize it more than that, that I know District six is like the palm of both of my hands or front and backside, both my hands. I know it very well. I have family and friends throughout the entire District six. I had kids here that grew up here. Um, they're Feridians, you know, I believe after ten years you consider Feridian. It still feels kind of weird, but I've been here almost forty-three years. So am I considered Feridian, Charles?
Yeah. Well, let, listen, let me ask you this right here. Um, a couple of questions, a couple of questions. One, what do you see? Well, first of all, um, and I don't want to bog down with, you know, statistics. But do you know right off hand, a breakdown statistically nationality was going um, in the, in the district? And two, what have you heard from the residents of the challenges of that you're facing? Are the things that they would like to see changed? Or what they say, well, this is what needs to be done in, in, in District six. So one, I'm asking, uh, do you have the statistics as it breaks down to the different nationalities in, in, in District six? Not that it matters, but it does in the sense of how we, we are. And so, and then what have been the word on the street about some of the things that people in District six would like to see um, dealt with and changes if that's have been a topic of conversation?
Okay. I don't have statistics in front of me, but I do remember that forty-nine percent are from the islands. They could be Jamaican, they could be Haitian, um, but more the Caribbean islands. That is the forty-nine percent. Now, the fifty-one percent is broken down. The next largest group is African American. Um, and after that, what I have seen that the growing number in our district is interest, the Hispanic percentage has increased a lot more than any other group here in the community. The uh, Asian community has increased. And another one that's really has increased from the last time um, the census was taken or statistics was done. It is biracial or multi-racial. So the, the growing groups that are happening right now in District six are the Hispanic group, which could be Puerto Rican, it could be Mexican. Um, it could be Cuban. That group is growing um, as well as um, the biracial. They don't specify if that's black and white, or if it's uh, Asian and black, or um, they just don't specify on, in that. And then also the multicultural, which we understand will be three or more um, different cultures into one. So those are the groups that are vastly growing. I cannot cite the stats because I don't want to give you the wrong information. I'd rather give you more accurate information. So um, yeah, I find you very interesting. The second part of your question, what concerns do the residents have? Is that correct, Charles?
Right.
The second part of the question?
The, well, right, yeah.
Okay. So going around, meeting my neighbors and trying to petition sign, I meant a lot. Um, a lot of them are, they don't like the way the community works. So I agree with them. Like, we need a makeover. We need to have a facelift. We don't need when people driving out community to be able to tell the difference if we are a majority minority community. They should not see any disparities when they drive down Colonial Drive. And unfortunately, you do see those disparities. So that is one thing that they are concerned with. They also concerned racial profiling. You know, they don't want to be in their car and just because they are black or brown, they're being pulled over. Safety is so, so important. We just recently had a meeting for the community about a week. I think it was last week. Um, we had a meeting, I think it was two weeks ago in reference to traffic concerns. So we're having a lot of accidents. We have a lot of people who are coming through the community and cutting through and using it versus like going down Pine Hills or Hiawassee. They cut through the main artery of this particular community. But going outside of Robbinswood, other people do also complain and said that traffic, not the traffic, the drivers have actually been coming very reckless. Um, running through red lights, you know, just doing donuts in the middle of a main road or highway and not caring, you know, about where you are, what you doing, just, you know, may even crash into you. So traffic is a big concern about it being congested. So leading from there, transportation. So I've had a lot of residents here talk to me about waiting for the bus. And I am a big advocate for transportation in reference to that we need to have more for our residents to be able to get around without them worrying about missing that one bus that comes every hour. So that's a big concern for the residents, the transportation. The safety is actually a bigger, bigger umbrella where there's a lot of things underneath it other than just traffic. We have streetlights. You could go down Hickley Road and it's a very long road and you will see one light on each corner. So in between that, and I took a video with one of my teammates and it's black. And it's like, that's ridiculous. Now they're paying money on their bill every month for streetlights. But they don't have the security of their streetlights. So streetlights, um, occasionally when it's a heavy rain, we have flooding. We have problems with our uh, drainage, our stormwater. Um, those are some more big concerns. Charles, the list is so long, I could go on and on and on. So um, I don't know if you want to spin off of those or you want me to continue?
Well, well, um, as of this Monday, in the month of July, how many debates have you had? And generally, what are the debates are about?
I have personally participated in one debate. And I believe one forum, maybe two. Um, and tomorrow, like I'm going to be um, with other candidates at a town hall meeting. So we have been having like town hall meetings. We have had other events like that. So tomorrow, there will be one tomorrow off of O'Winn and Garden Road and it's going to be from twelve to noon. So um, I'm going to have it posted on my page. So if anyone wants to come check this out, I believe all the candidates did for District six did sign up and will be there. Um, or at least majority of them did. I don't remember exactly, but um, I've been doing a lot of TV interviews, podcasts and events in the community. Um, just um, so last week was my meeting with Robbinswood on traffic concerns. Um, and I did a podcast, I did a couple of them. I think I, I know I did at least one with Pine Hills Talk in reference to traffic concerns because it's really important. And even Channel six news came out because they, they heard us and how we were like speaking very loudly, someone needs to hear us. And yes, the county, we're working with them and yes, they are helping us. However, people will still have accidents and getting hurt. So, you know, we're just trying to remind them if they could just speed it up a little bit more so we could save some injuries. And I even talked, spoken with the fire department and like did like kudos for doing that because we have so many accidents around in that area. So there's a lot of areas that need to be addressed. But as far as like events like this year, I um, with one of the lady, we went ahead and put together a health fair. Right here in Pine Hills, it, it hasn't, we haven't had a health fair in years. So Ms. Charisse Mitchell and I, we organized a health fair and we had approximately around thirty vendors. We have between two hundred and three hundred residents that came through. We fed everybody. I mean, we were even giving away clothes. We had a food drive going on um, earlier this year in March. So that was May. And then in March, I was working with Robbinswood Middle School. And we do an annual event called Archer's Service Day. So we didn't have it last year because of COVID, but we had it the year before because it was right before COVID. So we only missed one year. And this year, we got together, um, the committee, great group of women and men. We got together and we had a wonderful Archer's Service Day. So what is Archer's Service Day? Well, Robbinswood kids, their mascot is Archer. So they're archers. And the service day is when they go out in the community and they pick up trash and they clean up and they learn about being a volunteer. They learn about keeping their community clean and learn about teamwork and being respectful. So at that age group, I think is so important, you know, we're talking from sixth grade to eighth grade. They're so impressionable. They really need to have more exposure to different things at that age. So when they go in high school, you know, they're, they're, you know, pre-adult. So it's a great step, you know, to help them to become a more respectable resident as they get older. And so they hopefully won't be the ones that throw trash out the window. Right before that, uh, with Ms. Charisse Mitchell, between, I think it was like October and December, the food drive she was doing, but we also reached out to the homeless. We were feeding the homeless. Um, we were trying to bring them hot meals. So the food was cooked and everything and brought it to them. Um, we warmed it up right before we went hit out on the streets. And that was pretty awesome. We had a pretty, we also had a pretty cold snap around January, February. So then I tried to reach out to the community if I could get comforters and jackets and gloves and they came out. The residents showed up. I mean, they started bringing me comforters and blankets and I was looking at bags like, wow, these are really nice. And I even went in my closet and I started pulling out comforters that we haven't used in years. And I just start washing and washing and washing and just, you know, making sure I put my, you know, fabric softener in there and make it smell good. And we, I took that from my um, neighbors and I went out there, I went in the community and I went in areas that other people scared to. And I don't know, maybe it's part of my background, Charles, growing up in New York, that I understand fear, of course. And, but I also know with God, he says fear or not. But growing up in New York, I have seen so much and experienced so much as a kid, as a young adult, that it still hasn't arrived here in Florida. Thank God and I hope it doesn't. But I've seen so much that um, I think it prepared me. So when I went into this particular area that nobody else would go, I wasn't scared. And even people was looking at me like, who is that? And I'm like, hey, how you doing? I'm looking for so and so and so. And they're like, oh, okay, she's looking for someone who actually lives here. And then they started helping me and being friendly. And then I was like, I have these blankets. I have these jackets. And I remember one lady, I gave her my mom's faux fur. And it was a swing jacket. And she put it on, what, what can I do with, it's too big for me. I can't wear it. And it's like, it needs to be passed on to help someone else. So I gave her the jacket and the smile, oh my gosh, me and her started crying. You know, she says, I look like Marilyn Monroe. I look like Hollywood. So I started teasing as Miss Hollywood. So that was very joyful to be able to do that. And it was this one, actually it's a couple of other guys. One guy asked me for a comfort. He was the one who kickstarted. And I was like, yeah, it's some cold snap. So that's when I started thinking about collecting them and getting them to help them out while they're sleeping on the street. Because the ones who are from other countries, they don't have the necessary paperwork in order to get a job. And Charles, we need to, we need to help them. We need to be able to help them where they can have the paperwork to get a job, to make money, to be able to take care of themselves, to be able to get a home. So that was very sad, you know, listening that, you know, they can't get a job unless, like a couple of them was telling me, and I won't mention the businesses. But they were saying that they were like sweep or clean up and they may be working for like eight hours and the guy would give them like twenty bucks. And I'm like, you know, this is terrible. But to them, twenty was better than nothing. And I, I get that too, you know, when you're out in the street, you know, I understand that some circumstances may have you do things you never thought you would. And twenty bucks may feel like two hundred dollars to them. So I think it's sad that someone would take advantage of them. That's what bothers me. So there should be more resources for people who are homeless versus being shifted. Um, I heard that there was a group of homeless people in a very prominent, prominent area. And they didn't want them there. So they went ahead and got a bus. And they load them up and say, get on the bus, everybody get on the bus, you, 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 get on the bus, come on, get on the bus. They got on the bus and guess where they drove them, Charles? Into District six. That's where they drove them. And then they let them out and tell them, figure out where they're going to sleep at. And so that's upsetting too, that a prominent community will look at District six and say, you know what? I got a problem here. And I don't want to address it. I don't want to fix it. I just want to get rid of it. And that's sad. So that's the attitude. Get rid of it. And then to bring, you know, people who need help and just dump them off? And put them to have that attitude about District six? That needs to change. And that goes back to why I believe that all of District six needs a facelift.
That's why, I don't, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but that was why, that was one of the reasons why I said, are you ready? Because of the mess of what politics are and the, all the crap that you have to go through. Especially when you, see, that's why I said I, I won't make a good politician. Because when you see something that is so wrong, that affects so many people, that's not how we deal with it when you know it's wrong and how you treat people. And it's more has to do with, see, see now, see now you about to make me get on my little stick here and go hobbling around. Because and, and let me tell you what I mean. Now, now I'm, I'm going vent for a second, which has, again, has nothing to do with you. Okay, this is why I would not make a good politician. Because with what you see, again, this is my little thing. What you see in this country is what this country was built on. It was built on when the constitution was written. When these people put everything together, it didn't include me. They wasn't talking about me. I started out as three-fifth of a person. So what does that tell you about how you include the people? You weren't talking about me. In the history of this country, let you know how you see yourself and let you know how you see other people. And that has been the foundation of the very first existence, putting this country together and has been the history of this country. But we want to act like that doesn't exist. Because you're going to say what's politically correct. And that's why I said I wouldn't make a good politician. Because when something is dead straight in your face, obviously what it is, I got to use words like that are not truthful because I have to be politically correct. And I'm not good at that because if it's a rat, I got to call it a rat. If it's a horse, I got to call it a horse. I can't color code it no other way because you are affecting people's lives. And people are hurt, people are stressed, people are going through stuff, people, we need each other and we need to help each other. But we label. And so when you label, again, I'm on my little stick. Let me tell you what I mean. Like this right here. This country is built on when they talk about, well, a red and blue. Red and blue, okay? And, and I said this on this show, and that is just right here, Rose. When you start speaking into a, a right wing, a left wing, a conservative, a liberal, because we're strong on that. And I have no idea what that means. Because all that means is, is that you get to separate people. And you get to identify yourself to say that I'm better than you and you belong over there. So all I got is either you believe, and I'm saying as a believer, and what the words and what the word says and how you supposed to be and treat people versus labeling and putting yourself in this category to divide, to say, because I'm this, then you people are that. So, therefore, because I'm, I'm this, I get to live this way and you people get to do this, this way. So, it's, it just says who we truly serve. Because you got people with lip service, but the actions will let you know who and what they truly believe in, how they see you, how they see themselves. But I think the problem we have is this country has accepted that whole mindset. Because it started from the very beginning. And another thing that I say this right here, and I say it to you. The fact that the judges on the Supreme Court, a lifetime nominee, is one of the dumbest, stupidest things that you can ever do on this planet. Because that's the craziest thing and the only reason that is that way is because the people have accepted it and have allowed it. And there's, you should never give no person in this flesh that kind of power. That is absolutely insane. But, and I think because maybe, and I put it like this right here. I think maybe because we, all of us in our flesh have a little bit of Trump in us somehow, some way. So, I'll, I'll get off my little trope, I'll get off my little soapbox and just say, and, and I'm saying in the arrogance and, and how we're selfish, because we're all that way to some degree. So, that's what I'm saying. But we have accepted it. We don't understand they are supposed to work for us. We don't get that. So, that's why they sit in that seat. Because we truly believe there's a, there's a red state, there's a blue state, there's a conservative, there's a liberal, there's a right wing, because we believe that crap. So, we feed into it versus saying, this is what you're supposed to do and how you're supposed to serve. And you don't label people because that's how you divide. And that's what this country has, has, was built on and that's what we live through every day of our lives and how we see ourselves and how we see others. So, I'm gonna get off my soapbox. I'm gonna let you say what you wanna say and I'm gonna turn the podium back over to you.
Okay, Charles. So, I agree with you with your saying and I don't like to divide either. And so, what I did early on in my campaign, I decided, okay, how am I gonna brand myself? Because to me, my message starts even when I'm not in the room and you just see my logo. Or you see my teammates and the color that they're wearing. So, and, and actually I was challenged. I remember that classic weekend, I had someone, um, challenged me because they didn't know, or maybe they guessed what party I'm with and so they challenged me. But my thing is, I do believe in unity. Um, so, my color I chosen is purple. Now, purple can stand for a lot of things like royalty. But underlying, when you look at the Democrats and you look at the Republicans and you look at the colors and so much fighting, you know, over the years, it's very disheartening. But when you look at the blue for the Democrats and the red for the Republicans, when you put it together, Charles, you get the color purple. So, I want to share that message to everybody that I like the unity, I want the unity. I demand we have unity as much as possible. And when you put them together, it's like now they don't feel like, oh, you represent this particular group or you represent this particular group. You're saying out loud, you want to represent all of us just by seeing the color of your branding, of your, you know, website. And it's really important. Um, even, even my logo, my logo is a lotus. And we went back and forth trying to figure out how to do this because, you know, a Coe has the lotus, but we didn't wanna look like a Coe's lotus. And it's, it's a flower, you know, it's like a rose. People love roses, all kinds of shapes, colors and for the rose, the same thing with a lotus. So, if someone has a rose, that means you can't use the rose. Sure, you can. You just be a little bit more creative. And that's what we do with the lotus. So, the lotus, that message, when you really look at a lotus, where does it come from? It comes from the bottom of the water and dirt, murky water. It grows up from out of there to reach the sunlight above the water and open up to a beautiful flower. To me, District Six is a beautiful flower. And it's growing and it's, it's, it needs some sunlight. So, when you mentioned about political correctness, and I mentioned that earlier too. I, I, God knows, I, I don't like when someone lies. It just really bothers me. So, if I answer something politically correct, I'm gonna make sure that answer is correct. I'm not gonna footage and makeup stuff. Like you, you asked me a question earlier and I wasn't sure. I think it was the stats. So, it was like, I'd rather like tell you, like, I know this is 49%, but I'm not sure about the other 51% versus just giving you numbers and they could be wrong. I don't like that. So, when I'm politically correct, it's more, uh, being respectful to whomever I'm speaking with and being considerate. And if I don't know the answer, I'm that person in the room who will say, let me get back with you. I don't know the answer. Let me find out what it is and I would get back with you and I will follow up. It's important that we just don't say anything, like you mentioned that lip service. We just can't say anything. You know, as I'm on this podcast with you, it's a great thing. Because see, I could share with people how I feel and what I think. And they could see that. It's so important to me. The community is so important to me. It's like, I know it's a lot of different people and I worked with the county now for years as a volunteer. I have met a lot of them. And I, I could say that, you know, I got, found some great relationships with some people at the county. And so, I will continue those relationships and I'm so glad that I was able to build them. Because when I am elected to be the next Commissioner of District Six, I already have that great rapport with people in the county. So, I never worked for the county. So, I don't get a government check or anything like that, you know? So, it's like, I'm a citizen, I'm a resident, um, never been a politician. And I'm that person who wants to fight, who wants to speak for us. And I understand the point about corruption. But see, I think that's the beauty about my age is because I've been there. I've seen it. And when the song was back in the day, Been Around the World, So Many Days, yada, yada, yada. I really literally have mentally been around the world. And I am not at that point in my life that someone could like, strong-arm me into doing something I don't wanna do or we shouldn't do for the community. So, um, working in real estate, I have to bring that up because there's a lot of negotiation. It's a lot of times you gotta come to that table and you gotta, you gotta hammer it out. You gotta work it out. Make sure everyone's happy. Everyone feels like they won at the table, you know? So, I learned the art of negotiating and that is really important. Because I, I, I know when it comes to politics, you have to, you know, give and take. It cannot be one-sided. And I feel like District Six, it's been one-sided to the point, I mean, we get a little bit stuff, some things done, yes, absolutely. Things have been done. But when you look at all the districts, when you look at every single one, District Six has gotten at least. So, it's like, we need not to like give away more than we receive. It has to be a balance. Everything in life needs to have a balance. And when it comes to this position and working as a future politician, it has to be, it has to be for the community. The community is first. It's not about me. And I even put down my website, it's about you. It's about the community. It is not about me. And I wanna be that person who will make the difference. This is not lip service. If you know me and if you know me working in the community as a volunteer over the years, you would know that I give without looking for paycheck, without looking for something in return. So, no matter what happens, I'm gonna still keep on giving back to the community to my last breath. Because this is definitely my calling. I know this is my purpose. When I put the two careers together as they merge, I'm like, wow, Jesus, I never even seen this happening. But you open my eyes and you're like, this is what I want you to do. So, I'm proud where I am in my stage in my life, that I don't have to exaggerate at all my age or my career, what I've done, because I have done it. And I could give actual dates and years without exaggerating, rating what I have done because they're all factual. And I think that's important that our, um, candidates are, you know, factual with the community. So, I wanna start myself and let everyone know that to me, you're important. And if you feel that you need some help or some assistance to fix the community, I am available right now. And I've been doing things right now. Charles, I had a neighbor and she had these, uh, trees in front of her house. And I asked her, when I was trying to get signatures, and then I also pick up these signs, these nuisance signs all the time. And I asked her, uh, what can I do for you, you know, when I get in an office? And it's a matter of fact, tell me what I could do for you today. So, she said to me, she had these two big trees in front of her house and her husband retired. And every year, they have to cut back the branches because they grow. And every year, they spend at least a thousand dollars, if not more. And with them having a fixed income is very difficult. And so, I asked her, did she, you know, call anybody? She said, yes, she called 311. Yes, code of enforcement came out and she was told there was no, nothing that they could do for her. So, I said to her, like, Ms. Joanne, can I take some pictures? And she goes, yes. So, as I'm taking pictures, I'm realizing the trees are rotten, they're dying. And a huge oak tree, they lifted up the sidewalks where you cannot, like say if somebody was disabled in electric wheelchair, they could not drive over that without falling down. So, that will push them onto hastens and possibly get hit with a car. Because you'd be in your car now and get hit by a car just turning your driveway, which happened recently. The sidewalks were very lifted. The branches were falling, like cracking and falling down, big ones too. It was so huge that it was going over the tire hastens to cross the street. It was leaning and growing over her home. And I'm looking at some, taking these pictures and I come back and I said, Ms. Joanne, I'm gonna go ahead and put in 311. I have the app on my phone. It works wonderful and I'm gonna put it on my phone, the complaint. And I said, I'm gonna get this taken care of for you. And she goes, really? I'm like, yes. And she says, well, how are you gonna do that? I said, look at your trees. They're, they're dying. And I see two cut branches that were dead and, you know, some have fallen off. But these trees is beautiful. They may appear and I love trees. And I'm actually part of Arbor, um, Foundation. These trees are sick. And we need to make sure that no one gets hurt. If you don't get hurt, your family doesn't get hurt or no one else that's driving down the road. So, Charles, I was successful in having those trees removed this year. And, um, she was ecstatic. She couldn't believe I got that done. And I got some other trees taken down and I started that before I even thought about running for Commissioner. At a daycare on Silver Star and, um, Hastings, there was a tree there that was marked X for months. And I'm like, well, what's going on with this tree? I called them up. I had to hang, I had to hang on the phone. I had to stay with them. And guess what? I got that tree taken care of because them babies in that daycare, you know, God forbid, we wouldn't want that tree to fall on them. So, sometimes with the county, you have to stay on them just a little bit more, a little bit louder to let them know like, this is an urgent situation. Because the consequences, if that tree or any of those trees fell on a car during a storm or someone's home and someone got seriously injured or God forbid died, then that will cost the county even more money than just getting rid of the rotten trees. So, um.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Right, right. Well, I'm gonna ask you because we're, we're about to wrap it up here. But I wanna ask you, where are we now in the, in the race? Wh- wh- where, yeah, where are we? And I want you to close with why people should vote for the real deal. So, where are we in the race and why should we consider Rose Marie the real deal?
This upcoming election is very important. The month of August, we will be having our primary election, which is on August 23rd. Early voting begins August 8th. However, you could request a mail-in ballot and get that in the month of July and return it immediately. So, early voting and mail-in ballot is the number one way to go. It is equivalent to 71%. Um, this election is very important because there are many of us in it, in the race for District Six. Um, only two will go to November. So, I need you to come out in August and vote for me. Because I am the candidate who is concerned and interested in making this community better. I am not doing this for a title. I'm not doing this for a seat. I'm not doing this for the money. I am doing this for you. I wanna make a difference. I wanna be that different candidate that you could say, you know what? Where has the real deal been? And I'm using that slogan because I want you guys to remember me when you go to vote. My name is Rose Marie Deal and it's spelled D-I-E-H-L. However, it's pronounced as Deal. And as Charles mentioned, um, I am the real deal. You could find more about me on my website, uh, which is W-W-W dot, W-W-W dot Rose Marie Deal, D like for District and then number six dot com. And by the way, if you have any questions or concerns, um, email me. The email is on the website. Um, email me, uh, you could contact me and ask me, um, any questions right now. You don't have to wait until Election Day. If you have some concerns, um, I'm open for you. Matter of fact, tomorrow at 10 o'clock, we will be meeting at Hiawassee Library. So, if you're interested in, um, if you're interested in helping out and volunteering, that'll be awesome. And let me correct on that date. It's gonna be Saturday, um, July, let's see. I'm trying to do the math real quick. It'll be July 16th at 1 o'clock would be a, a Hiawassee Library. Uh, if you wanna come out and meet me in person, you can ask me questions there as well. Um, I want you to come out and feel like, you know what? She is the real deal. So, come talk to me. Um, you could also, what'd be another good link for you? I'm on a link tree. You can look at me on Instagram, on Twitter, YouTube, TikTok. You name it, Charles. I'm pretty much on anything and everything because I want the community to reach me. So, District Six, vote for me, Rose Marie Deal. I got your back. I see you. I feel you and I understand what you need. So, again, vote for me, Rose Marie Deal, and I look forward to being the best Commissioner that you have ever had. And if you live in Pine Hills, think about this. We haven't had a Commissioner that actually lived in Pine Hills in almost 16 years. I am a stakeholder in Pine Hills for years. I have been a stakeholder. So, I'm not like just recently started doing things because of the election. I've been doing this. Because actually, I never thought that I was going to be running for any seat in politics. So, this just happened to happen and it's, it's all coming together. But my main concern is addressing your needs and fixing it. And I know I can do the job. I know I'm prepared to do the job and I'll be ready to do it on day one. So, please vote for me. Um, you could volunteer, you could donate, um, hashtag, what is the hashtag? No, it's dollar sign, real deal, D six. So, you could donate to my Cash App, dollar sign, real deal, which would be D-E-A-L, D six. So, I thank everyone for your time. Charles, thank you.
Sure. Um, it's so, so very important, especially during these times. Um, like I said, I, you know, we, we going through mass shootings. Um, it's just a crazy time. The Japanese Prime Minister been assassinated. We found out about the young little kid, eight years old. He's paralyzed from the shooting of just recently happened. And there's just so much going on and, um, it's just weird to me, uh, things that are so obvious. And, um, it's just weird to me, uh, things that are so obvious in the times that we're living in, the challenges that we face. And like I said, it's not about what's in the best interest for the people. People just seems to be what is in the best interest for themselves. And they're motivated by their own factors of however they see life and, uh, different parties and right wing, left wing, conservative, liberal, whatever the heck that is. So either you are about doing what's right or you're about doing what's for you. And, um, unfortunately, that has been accepted in our culture and our society from the very beginning, starting with the Constitution and that, you know, what that is. And so that's a whole nother show. But I want to thank you. Um, I hope that people can feel your passion in your heart. Um, I would like to do a follow-up at some point in time. And you can come back on the show anytime and we don't necessarily have to talk about the world of politics. We can talk about what it's meant like living in Pine Hills, what it's like, uh, raising kids and being a mother and so on and so forth. Uh, because I would love to hear that, uh, um, about your journey and so on and so forth. I'm just that kind of person, because that always interests me. And so I'm always having open ear to hear people's story, because we all have, have one. There's a, there's a book in all of us. So I want to say good luck to you, thank you for taking the time to come on The Journey Journey. The Journey, see, that's. I'm saying The Journey Journey. No, 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 I'm laughing, because I have friends that called the show that. So I have to say, no, it's not The Journey Journey, it's The Journey Twenty Twenty. So I said, and I'm laughing at myself, because that's the first time I've ever, I can't tell you how many times my friends say, hey, so where can I find The Journey Journey? It's like, no, it's not The Journey Journey, it's The Journey Twenty Twenty. So even myself, I done got caught up. Yeah, so, yeah, so I had to laugh at, but The Journey Twenty Twenty people. And so, uh, thank you so very much for taking the time to come on the show, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
And good, good luck to you. All right, that is Rosemarie, the real deal. And she asked her to come on the show. Um, once I was talking to her, I just really wanted to hear what she had to say. Because there's, there's other people that I know that are in the race as well. And so, um, during these difficult times, it is so, so, so very important. And I don't think that we, on the local level, really understand, uh, the power that we have. Uh, I was saying earlier, if you listen to the show, I was saying something about how things are set up in this country. But we can't come together enough to get past these little things that separates us, uh, that makes all the difference in the world, because our focus is always on the things that keeps us from doing the things that we supposed to do. And what that spirit is, and that's, that spirit is very specific. And it has a purpose to keep us focusing on things that is not in the best interest for us all. What's in the best interest for self. And that's really how this, this country was founded. And when we look at things like those on the Supreme Court and we allow and accept what that is, that's just not in the best interest for people. It's just not, you should never give anybody that kind of power. We're not wired that way, we're too into our self-interest. And then people change. You know, when you, when you come into this thing and you're fifty and you're now seventy-five, you, you don't know where a person is mentally, emotionally and spiritually, because that's who we are. We, we change. But we don't care enough to make them understand that we should be the ones that should be making these choices, not these people who have their own agenda. We should be saying, we is gonna put this on the ballot for us to vote and for us to have a say-so about how to make it right the best that we can. It'll never be perfect. But we don't have to accept this thing in which this is so dysfunctional and so about everything but other than for, you know, for the people. But we agree with it, so I don't know. But anyway, uh, we want to thank, uh, Rose for taking the time to come on the show. And we will do a follow-up to see what's going on. And, and I also would like to keep a follow-up and do, um, some more stories on what's going on in Pine Hills, other than it just being political. Because there are a lot of great things that are in Pine Hills. And I know I work with the Pine Hill senior citizens. Um, I've done, I've had them on the show. And, uh, they're always doing something. Now, Ms., Ms. Sheila is, has retired, she was the president, but she recently stepped down. But I still talk to her as well. And I, now I have to be introduced to the new president as well. So a lot of great things happen in Pine Hills. But this is The Journey Twenty Twenty, where we come to you, uh, weekly. And we ask that you please for questions, comments and concerns. You can always hit us up with an email and don't forget about Chill Monies, which I spoke of earlier. And also, don't forget about the Pastor's Roundtable, where we come to you monthly as well, right here. Uh, you, on my Facebook page, also on Twitter, and it's also on YouTube. The Journey Twenty Twenty, as I always say, the word comes by hearing and hearing by the word of the Lord. Everybody, enjoy the rest of the week and you be blessed.